Good evening, everyone. I am calling the March 12th, 2024 meeting of the Board of Education to order per Government Code Section 54950-EXECUTOR and Education Code Section 35140-EXECUTOR at 5:01 PM. We will now adjourn into closed session for the purposes of discussing the following matters. Conference with labor negotiators, Dr. Alex Chernus, Superintendent Gary Stein, Assistant Superintendent Admin Services, Dr. Deputy Dr. Isaac Gates, Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources -- we need to change that on here -- CSEA, APLE, PLUM, 3.2 Claims. We have a claimant of Rochelle Thompson, agency claimed against Placentia or Belinda Unified School District for workers' compensation claim number 22025612 for the amount of $78,662.50. 3.3, we have a conference with legal counsel about existing litigation. Paragraph 1 of subdivision D of Government Code 54956.9, case number 30-2022-01253908-CU-MC-CJC. Is there anyone here in the audience who would like to address any of these items that I have just read off? Seeing that there is no one, I will adjourn into closed session at 5:02 PM. Good evening, everyone. We are returning to open session at 6:02 PM. And I was at Wagner Elementary doing a school visit, and I was privy to see the Tuffrey drum line there, and they were spectacular. And so I said, I have made it a point of having students open up our board meetings. So I then invited our Tuffrey band. So let's give a warm welcome to Tuffrey Middle School's talented student musicians here with us this evening. Under the direction of David Salibi, members of Tuffrey String Octet provided music in the lobby as you arrived this evening. And in the boardroom tonight, we have Tuffrey's Jazz One Group, which will now perform a number for us to enjoy. And it sounds like we may have a special guest that is going to join us soon after. Director Salibi, we will turn it over to you. Now, Mr. Salibi, please don't run off. Yeah, I am. Am I on now?
I don't think so.
Can you guys hear me? Okay. Okay, can you hear me now? All right. So let's give our Tuffrey Falcons, including the octet, jazz band, and drum line, a big round of applause. Some noteworthy facts about Tuffrey's music arts program. They have the largest middle school instrumental music program in the district, serving 40% of their student body. The program encompasses an award-winning color guard, marching band, concert band, drum line, two jazz bands, an orchestra, and various string chamber groups. Director Salibi shares that his students are very motivated to reach their academic potential through music, and he consistently sees high test scores and GPAs. He has also noted that none of this could be possible without a very supportive administration, including Principal Akamoto, Assistant Principal Sarah Barton, and Counselor Abby Eastman. On behalf of the entire board, we are so grateful that all of you could be here tonight to show your talents, and you cannot leave without answering a question. I would love for you to tell us and our viewers at home about how the program has become what it is and why it matters so much to Tuffrey.
Sure. Well, first of all, I am just honored and privileged to be standing here in front of you and all of you. It is an honor of mine. I actually grew up in this district. I went to Wagner Elementary School in Tuffrey myself, and went to Eldorado, and was involved in music at all three levels, and could tell you just the benefit, yeah. Our VAPAC Coordinator, Mr. Mortensen, was actually one of my honor trumpet band teachers. He gave us a clinic, and I remember that being a fifth grader, and it's so nice now to be under your leadership now in the district as well. And so it really is full circle. My father is a bus driver here, and he took our school to come to our facility here, so that was really cool. And so it really is kind of a full circle thing. And so to answer your question, yes, our program is quite large, but it really wasn't my doing. There was a 30-year tradition of excellence at Tuffrey that I was lucky and fortunate enough to inherit and continue, and that's because of a long tradition in this district of supporting music and the arts, and that has continued throughout. And I just have to say a huge thank you to our board for approving the spending for Prop 28 and for giving more instrumental music instruction in the elementary school levels. I could tell you that that could have a ripple effect in the future years of being able to have students that have more knowledge of music, and they're going to be able to start music at a lot farther from places. I just want to thank Mr. Mortensen for heading that up and for caring so much about that, and thank you for believing in music education, because what you saw here is just 50 students of a 220-student program, and that is because of the support that not only you guys so graciously give our activity, but just also putting the money there as well. So I just want to thank you for that. Our program is quite diverse. It's because we have a fantastic administration that supports us at every single turn, giving us opportunities to perform and to showcase our talents around campus, and not only that, but to do so outside of campus as well. The reason why we are at Wagner is because Ms. Sarah Barton, our Assistant Principal, headed that up and believed in our percussion and wanted to create connections with our elementary school students and thought that the percussion might be a fun way to make that happen. It's that type of leadership, it's that type of foresight and vision for the school that allows us to do what we do. And again, I cannot thank you enough and our Principal, Mr. Akamoto, who's just approved everything that we have done and has given us so much support and has listened to me whenever I have crazy ideas. I always have a lot of ideas for how we can represent our school and our program, and he's so good at doing that. So I want to thank both of them for that. Could we give them a huge round of applause, please? And I'll just quickly say, we really care about the full student at Tuffrey. We care about giving them the most well-rounded education that we can, providing extracurricular activities and strong academics. And all of our teachers, we are all in on the same goal, and it is super cool to be involved in a community that is truly about the kid and about each and every student and knowing our students by name and caring about our students by name, and it's a full circle thing with everybody on our staff. Just right now, actually, our students are hopping on a bus, about 30 of those students that just performed, and they're going to go to our History Night. We are the only school in the district that offer a History Night for our honors, history students. And so not only are these students very, very successful in their arts education, but they go and they're going to take all that knowledge, all that training, and all the work ethic that we try to teach them in the program, and they apply it to all of their other core subjects. And so we really care about that here. So again, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak, for caring about our programs and allowing it to be in the public, and just know that we are forever grateful for all that you do to encourage the arts and to encourage music in our district. Sorry, my voice is crazy. I've been yelling all day. So, thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. We appreciate that, and I know that everyone has to hurry off to History Night. But thank you for coming, and thank your parents for helping and all that you guys do. Okay, so our report out of closed session is as follows. The board met and conferred in closed session to approve workers' compensation claim number 22025612. Motion was made by Todd Frazier, second by Sean Youngblood, and the vote carried 5-2-0. And now I'm going to ask the Vice President, Todd Frazier, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Would you please stand? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
All right, and now I would like to have come forward a director from the Yorba-Linda Water District, Brett Barbary, for an inspirational message.
Here or there? Right there. I feel like I'm in trouble. Good evening, President Blades, members of the board, Dr. Chernus and team, ladies and gentlemen. As a proud graduate of Glenn Knoll School, 1975, Bernardo Yorba, 1977, and of course the best high school in the district, Esperanza, 1981. There we go. And I still remember the alma mater, but I won't sing tonight. Otherwise, after this performance, I'd be terrible. It's an honor to be here tonight and share a few thoughts of inspiration. From my first-grade teacher, Mrs. Walker, to my high school honors English teacher, Mr. Caredo, my teachers taught me to write and think critically, and some even taught me how to use power tools, and to this day, I still have 10 fingers. Thank you, Mr. Widler, and thank you, Mr. Ewing. And you need to get woodshop back in schools. I'm just going to throw that in. In addition, all of my basketball coaches, Coach Snow, Coach Pope, Coach Sowersby, Coach Riggs, Coach Dimini, both Mike and Doug, Coach By and Coach Moore, they challenged me mentally and instilled a critical competitive toughness that has allowed me to succeed in life. Each teacher and coach imparted their knowledge to me and provided me with unique experiences as a student and member of the PYLUSD family. I learned to compete both in the classroom and on the playing field. These experiences challenged me intellectually, helped me develop my competitive instincts, and prepared me for a future in public policy, including 22 years as an elected official. Seeing that our district still provides life-preparing opportunities for our students, such as the new Orange County School of Computer Science at Bernardo Yorba, it's now a middle school, it's gratifying. Innovative programs like this, which Dr. Beth Fisher is leading, are just one example that demonstrates the continued commitment of our board, our superintendent, and the teachers of the district to the parents and students of our community. Throughout my 40-year career in public policy, I've met and worked with fascinating people, including presidents, governors, senators, members of Congress, and state and locally elected officials. I've also participated in significant events I would not have dreamed of as a student. I sought to glean knowledge and inspiration from every opportunity presented. One such privilege was attending the opening of the Richard Nixon Library and Birthplace in 1991. As President Nixon concluded his remarks, he added a personal note to the youth of our country, which I believe is as relevant today as it was when delivered by our hometown president nearly 33 years ago. Quote, "I believe in the American dream because I have seen it come true in my own life. As you travel through life, you may sometimes suffer disappointment of defeat. Losing is sad, but the greatest sadness is to travel through life without knowing either victory or defeat. Whatever happens, always remember that only by participating in a cause bigger than yourself can you be true to yourself, and above all, know in your hearts that there is never a better time to be alive than now, and never a better country in which to live than America, because you hold the future." Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. Let the record show that all board members, our student board member is not present tonight, is she? All five board members, and we do not have our student board member tonight. Next, I will need an approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the March 12th, 2024 Board of Education agenda as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Ms. Anderson. I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries 5-0. This will now be the time for our public comment announcement. Public cards are -- public comment cards are available on the foyer. Cards must be completed and turned in prior to the designated time for public comment. Provide a maximum of three minutes per person, or perhaps two minutes tonight based on the number of speakers. If translation is needed, please let us know, and we will give you an additional three minutes. We have a civility policy per Education Code 220 prohibits discrimination on the basis of disability, gender, gender identity, gender expression, nationality, race, or ethnicity, religion, sexual orientation, or any other characteristic that is contained in the definition of hate crimes set forth in section 422.55 of the Penal Code, including immigration And next, if I can have a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting for February 13th, 2024, as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mr. Youngblood. I have a second by Mrs. Anderson. Is there any comments? The only comment that I have tonight is that I would like to place on the record that all of our closed-session items from the month of February carried with a 5 to 0 vote. All right, can we have a vote to approve the minutes, please? All in favor?
Aye.
Just a second. That's already in the minutes.
I understand. I was just reiterating the minutes. I have a motion on the table. Can we approve?
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye. Motion carries 5 to 0. Okay, and now we're going to go into our recognitions. We have our 150th Anniversary Logo Design Contest winners, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Chernus.
All right, this is a really cool, exciting time where we can honor some of our students. So, good evening, President Blades, trustees, members of the community. Tonight, we have the opportunity to celebrate three winners of our 150th Anniversary Logo Design Contest. So if I could ask students Bill Meng, Genevieve Goyer, and Nathaniel DeBree to please join me at the lectern, as well as Eldorado teacher, David Block. So, as many of you know, 2024 marks a huge milestone in our district's history, the 150th anniversary. The Placentia School District dates back to 1874, when a one-room schoolhouse was established by pioneers who paved the way for our present-day, award-winning educational system. If you're curious to learn more about it, you should visit PYLUSD and find the history section. Fast forward to present day, we're proud to celebrate our anniversary, and we're very excited to involve students. Back in December, we launched our 150th Anniversary Logo Design Contest, aimed at honoring pioneering spirit of those who put down our roots. I thought it would be great to have the students take part in this contest and award this to some of our best and brightest students. So the objective, obviously, was to create a compelling, visually captivating, graphic design that symbolizes the district's 150th anniversary, showcasing its history, growth, and commitment to educational excellence. We asked the students to follow a set of list of design requirements and submission guidelines, including incorporating the district's full name, colors, and the year span from 1874 to 2024. So, the response was overwhelming. We had over 100 entries in this contest, and just the talent that came forward, and it was incredible. For many of years, our district's focused on CTE programs tailored to equip students with both the hard and soft skills essential for success in many different industries. Through hands-on training, industry-relevant coursework, and partnerships with local businesses, students gain practical experience and develop a comprehensive skill set, like designing a professional logo. Our students learned knowledge, coupled with their artistic abilities, made the final decision really tough. So after careful consideration and feedback from our superintendent's advisory committees, we have some winners. And so first, I'd like to thank Mark -- Mr. Mark Holman. Is Mark here tonight? I want to thank Mark. He's a parent in the community, and he's also contributed for a scholarship for the winner. So let's give Mark a hand. All right, so in third place, we have Nathaniel DeBree, ninth grader at Eldorado High School, currently enrolled in -- so Nathaniel's currently enrolled in Mr. Block's digital design class, and I look at his designs on the screen. Nice job. So when we asked Nathaniel about his logo, he said, "My design uses the old schoolhouse to represent the roots of our district and to commemorate the enormous growth that's taken place to take us from a tiny schoolhouse to an enormous school district spanning multiple cities. The hills are in the design because they are an essential part of our heritage. They are where Yorba family found oil and kick-started Orange County's economy. The numbers 150 rise like the sun, showing the enormity of this occasion and the bright future this district strives to give its students." So let's give him a big hand. And Daniel, we'd like to present you with a $100 gift certificate for your efforts. Next, in second place, we have Genevieve Goyer. Am I pronouncing your last name right? Okay, good. Who's also a ninth-grade student at Eldorado High School and in Mr. Block's digital design class. I look at her designs on the screen before you. So this design features a Placentia water tower and the mountain range visible behind it to invoke a sense of familiarity. The schoolhouse from the original design is also there, paying homage to it. The design uses all of the provided colors with the name of the district displayed on a golden ribbon. I did this to once again pay homage to original design. I used a diamond shape because it's more distinct and shows a new, fresh take on the PYLUSD logo. So congratulations, Genevieve, and we have a $250 gift certificate. Okay, last but not least, first place, Valencia High School 11th grader, Bill Meng, in Mr. Johnson's AP Studio Art Design Class. And a look at his designs up here. So when asked about his inspiration, Bill said that he wanted to center the 150 and make it the largest component of the design in order to drive the reader's attention towards just how long PYLUSD district has been around. He said that he also noticed inside the "O" could be an opportunity to include elements of the original PYLUSD logo, and so I simplified and created a more modern version of the schoolhouse from the PYLUSD logo and placed it inside. I wrapped the rest of the text around the 150 to incorporate all the words nicely together in a single shape. Bill's teacher, Mr. Johnson, couldn't be here, but he did have some words for you as well. He said that Bill is a bright, intelligent, and well-rounded student. He exudes positivity, as well as a very strong work ethic. So we're very proud of you, and we'd like to present you with a certificate and a $500 So we extend all of our gratitude to all the participants who submitted. It's a great event. It got a lot of kids involved. The winning designs will be showcased prominently. event. It got a lot of kids involved. The winning designs will be showcased prominently throughout the year, helping to leave an indelible mark on our district's history. So, thank you, Bill, Genevieve, Nathaniel. Thank you, Eldorado, Mr. Block. Thank you, Valencia, Mr. Johnson. And this concludes our report. And let's, let's take a photo with the board. Come on up.
All right, public comment is an opportunity for the public to provide input to the Board of Education. During the public comment period, board members do not dialogue with speakers or make comments regarding the information shared. We have 22 speakers tonight, and so that will break it down to one and a half minutes each. When you guys come up to speak, I will ask that you repeat your name when you get to the podium, so we know who is in fact speaking. And so, I'll call everyone up in groups of fours, and so if you can come take a seat to the front, and then, when it's your turn, come to the podium. Heidi Chipman, Haley Darrow, and Farin Arien, Linda Mannion, and Sam Mayovich. Heidi, take it away.
As Leandra had said, my name is Heidi Chipman, but I am Dr. Heidi Chipman. I really want to make sure that that's put in there. I worked hard for that. I'm here this evening, both personally and professionally. My history with Placentia Yorba Linda School District began 47 years ago. I attended Richard Nixon School. My father was PTA president there. My mother was a teacher in our district, and I so followed in her footsteps. I have taught in both ends of the district, between my children, myself, and my mother. I've probably been in every school taught, or been in every school in the district. I have, I've taken on many leadership roles, both district-wide, statewide, and school-wide. I have many friends in the district, and they have been coming to me recently to ask me for help. They are depressed. They're frightened. They're unsure of their jobs and other issues. When I listen to the board meetings, I'm not sure that our school board has crafted a working relationship with teachers and administrators based on mutual respect, collegiality, and a joint commitment to students' success. When districts use resources to support achievement and instruction rather than administrative issues, schools show gains. I hope that acting with professional demeanor...
Thank you very much.
...that models the district's beliefs and values. Thank you.
Next, Haley and Farah?
Yes.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Farah Arien.
And my name's Haley Darrow.
And we are actively involved students at Esperanza High School. We feel extremely disappointed with those of you who should be our trusted representatives. The board claims they create a positive climate for two-way communication. However, we have to find out from Twitter that our own principal was let go. You serve to, you serve a purpose to support the students, yet you let go our biggest means of support. Because you refuse to listen to the students, we took it upon ourselves to seek what they truly think of your recent behavior.
Many have repeatedly stated that our principal is incredibly supportive, along with feeling disappointed and confused in your motivation to let him go. Without concrete evidence of a negative effect, your changes seem to have an underlying political agenda that no longer benefits the students, but rather forces them to conform to your own personal ideologies. As a show of support, as a show of support for the principals and staff that are being let go for no logical reason, we are going to walk out next Wednesday, March 20th, at our school and any other schools that choose to participate. Thank you.
Linda Mannion.
Linda Mannion. I would like to address a comment that was made at the previous board meeting that referred to the history of our district as stale air. I know that probably there was no intent to hurt, but it did hurt. And this is just a small example of what, what our district has meant to all of us for the last 150 years, as we just saw up here on the board. We are a district of National Blue Ribbon Schools, California Distinguished Schools, California Gold Ribbon Schools, College Board's AP District Honor Roll, Most International Baccalaureate Diplomas Awarded in Orange County, California Exemplary Independent Study High School, California Model Continuation High School, America's Best High School Awards at U.S. and World Report, Orange County Register, Top Workplace, City of Placentia Best Workplace, California State Top Awarded TK Program, Highest AP Enrollment and Test Pass Rates in Orange County, Cutting Edge CTE College and Career Pathways, and Specialized Academies with Parental Choice Options offered at every high school. On behalf of all the educators in Placentia Yorba Linda, we are proud to have delivered academic excellence to our students for over 150 years. Thank you.
Sam?
My name is Sam Mayovich. I'm a retired teacher and former Academic Decathlon Coach for Valencia High School. Congratulations to this year's Valencia High School Academic Decathlon team for its third-place finish in Orange County, and for qualifying to participate in this year's California State Academic Decathlon in Santa Clara. This success reflects not, well, not only on Valencia, but on the Placentia Yorba Linda Unified School District as a whole. Valencia's performance places its team among the elite schools in the state of California. Woodbridge University, Tribuco Hills, and Westminster's are the high schools from Orange County that will accompany Valencia to Santa Clara. While there are many highly demanding academic competitions, Academic Decathlon is unique in that it requires students to perform across the entire array of core subject areas. It also requires that students compete in varied grade-point average categories. In other words, Academic Decathlon's success reflects the school as a whole, and not any particular program. Valencia's excellent performance in this competition is a legacy spanning over many years now. When one thinks of the major educators who have contributed to the greatness of Valencia over recent decades, a few names come to mind. No one was more central to the current achievements at Valencia than retired Principal James Bell. Rick Lopez and Joey Davis built upon the foundation set by Mr. Bell.
All right, so your time is up. Thank you very much. Next, we have Kim Vog, Patricia Hanzo, Heidi Woodward, and Sue Sawyer.
What was the first name?
Kim Vog.
Hi, I'm Kim Vog, Kimberly Vogi. I'm a 27-year teacher in Placentia Yorba Linda who left a couple of years ago. You claim you want to change the trajectory of PyLUSD. When managing complex change, five elements must be present: vision, skills, incentives, resources, and an action plan. When any of these are missing, it leads to confusion, anxiety, resistance, frustration, and false starts. By conducting business in the way you have this past year, you have created a level of distrust among the community, teachers, parents, and administrators. When long-term educational leaders leave or are forced to leave an organization, institutional knowledge is lost. When leaders who have been dedicated to the education of countless students in PyLUSD are fired for not being a good fit, the people they lead begin to wonder where and how they fit into an organization that does not seem to follow any sort of logic. When you don't present a complete financial picture of a large-scale project like the Elite Sports Academy, but already have three out of five votes to pass it, you create a feeling of deception. And in all of this, and in all of this, where are the children? Certainly not at the center. Decisions in education should bring all parties to the table to work collectively. Let's make sure these radical changes are necessary and sustainable.
Patricia Hanzo?
Patricia Hanzo. And I want the public to pay attention. And if the district attorney's paying attention, and if the district lawyer's paying attention, it is required that elected board members comply with the California Ralph Brown Act rules, which means you must avoid information sharing, discussions in private, or decision-making outside of a properly noticed meeting. This is a properly noticed meeting. The Brown Act says serial communication, like email discussions or a phone tree, those type of methods are not allowed by board members, because it deprives the public of the opportunity to participate in the decision process, the decision-making process. There's also an Assembly Bill. Jot it down, Superintendent Shurness, because you probably need to read it. Assembly Bill 992 addresses social media and elected boards. It prohibits board members in discussing among themselves official business on social networking platforms. It includes posting or commenting on social media sites in response to another board member's post. When you like or comment or give an emoji, that's considered communication. That's not allowed. Board members need to know that when you do board business, it needs to be here, in these open, public meetings.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Hi, this isn't really my normal platform, so if you guys were eight, it would come off way better. But, so just forgive me for... Hello and good evening. My name is Heidi Woodward, and I have been a teacher in the district for 24 years. But that is not where my relationship with Placentia Yorba Linda started. It start, it began when I moved here from Chicago and joined Glenel Elementary, Bernard Yorba Middle School, and finished at Esperanza High School. I have lived in this district for most of my life. This district has become much more than just a job to me. This district has become my family. The people I have met along the way of this journey have felt like family and truly actually become my family. My husband is a high school teacher at Esperanza. My children attend Yorba Linda Middle School and Esperanza. So, my family is Placentia Yorba Linda, to the heart. But what makes the district, district feel really special to me, that is the friends and friendships, colleagues and students that I've met along the way. These people show up every day, and seeing the people that matter the most to you when you arrive at your job every day is so important. People say learning the best in a happy classroom, people say kids learn the best in a happy classroom, taught by happy teachers.
Your time is up. Thank you.
And happy administration.
Thank you.
My name is Sue Sawyer. I'm a teacher at Esperanza High School. According to the Treasurer of California website, B.1.4.2 Developer Fees, since January 1, 1987, school districts are authorized to levy a fee, charge, dedication, or other requirement, collectively referred to as developer fees, against any construction within the boundaries of the district to help the district mitigate the impact of new development on the district's facilities. These developer fees may only be used for projects to accommodate students resulting from that new development. Now, as I understand it, it's the school board's responsibility to certify that the intended construction meets those requirements. There must be a direct correlation between new development within the district area and what we do with developer fees. In addition, at the last board meeting at minute 53, Alex states, "We've offered free tutoring for thousands of students this year." And then at 5307, he states again, "Before this year, that never happened." That is categorically false. It takes offense to me and all the other teachers that offer tutoring all the time, all the math teachers that are here, people that read, and it has been happening long before he came to this district. EHS and VHS started this a lot longer before he was hired, and there are current district administrative officials that have seen it and even found solutions for busing kids after school after tutoring. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Karen Alexic, Andy Falco, Ernie Vejar, and Judy Desjardine.
My name is Karen Alexic. I'm a teacher at Brookhaven Elementary School. And I was wavering between what I wanted to talk about tonight, but I think I'm going to give a shout-out to my staff at Brookhaven, and I want to talk about the wonderful things that are going on at our school. Last year, we applied for the first time for the PBIS, I guess it's an award, and while we were new, we still managed to get the bronze. This year, we are working to go for either silver or gold. We've been making changes. We are not stale. We just recently had an iReady trainer come in, and she was showing us ways as teachers to identify the students that have the most need, that need help with their reading and math, and how to target them, and how to create small groups to reach their needs. And she gave some really wonderful ideas. So, we're going to have some good small groups going on there. We have a PAL program that was created at our school to help kids that might not have friends, that kids that need help playing games. There are fifth and sixth graders who have taken on roles of responsibility to help other kids within the school. So, we're providing leadership opportunities for them. It's the first time we've had a PAL program at our school. We also have peer mentors at our school that's been going on for a while now. Again, we have fifth and sixth graders that pair up with the little kids, or even kids that maybe don't know how to play properly, and they give them buddies. They play games with them if they're not into sports. They give them a way to have a good time at recess where maybe they wouldn't have had that before. Our Student Council holds a food drive every year. We have a toy drive, the Aladdin Musical, and I just started Genius Day Projects. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Andy Falco?
I love Brookhaven, and my kids love Brookhaven. It's a great school. It should be obvious that the district employees must be hired with the sole responsibility of educating and keeping our children safe in this community. It is also PyLUSD's responsibility to remove employees who refuse to educate or are simply incapable of educating our children. Additionally, the sexualization, indoctrination, and teaching of children to hate each other... Additionally, the sexualization, indoctrination, and teaching of children to hate each other should have never entered our school system. But for years, we've allowed two organizations, Planned Parenthood and teachers' unions and their followers, to do just that. And even though neither of them have a positive impact on children and zero educational impact, we have allowed them to control our education system annually. They spend tens of millions of dollars to destroy our children's minds through political influence. Most recently, representative of these organizations in the form of a principal and teachers have threatened PYLUSD employees and their young children if they align themselves with Dr. Chernus and the school board. One of such terrorist threats against one of our teachers, leaders, and their children can be found in Orange County Sheriff's Report Number 24-008265. I also want to congratulate Dr. Chernus on being one of the few districts in our area that have increased the attendance in our schools by at least 400 new students coming into our school district. So that is an accomplishment, and it's only because of your leadership that that's happening. Thank you very much.
We have a civility policy, and everyone was quiet when the other speakers were here, and so we need the same type of respect. Thank you. Ernie Vehar.
Hello, my name is Ernie Vehar. I'm here with my wife Jennifer and my daughter Aleah, who is back there right now. We came here this evening to thank President Blades and Dr. Chernus on the quick response to an issue we had with our daughter. Our daughter started at Tuffrey Middle School last fall. However, in October, she was diagnosed with non-Hodgkin lymphoma. She missed four months of school receiving chemotherapy during these treatments. She missed... Sorry. She missed four months of school receiving chemotherapy. During these treatments, she constantly talked about returning to school. This was her main goal. Aleah is a straight A student who loves attending school. Thankfully by God's grace, she is now in remission and was cleared to return to school in February. However, the return to Tuffrey was not as smooth as we hoped. The way the counselor and principal greeted her return was extremely disappointing, and several meetings, we were still bothered by the discussions we had and the denial that they brought to our daughter. I'm running out of time. Even with our last efforts meeting with a teacher who disciplined Aleah for not doing PE, we were seriously concerned with our daughter's safety. We were able to make contact with Leandra at 9:00 PM at night, and she reached out to Dr. Chernus. By 8:00 AM, the president called my wife, granting our request for her to keep on going forward with school. By your guys' grace, our daughter is now safe at Tuffrey, and you guys did an excellent job, and we cannot thank you enough. Thank you so much.
Judy DeJardine.
Good evening. I'm Judy DeJardine, and I do have grandchildren in the district, and I would like to do a praise. I would like to recognize two 5th grade teachers at Mabel Payne, Mr. Zitlow and Mrs. Thurston. They developed the helpers program, and I happen to take my two granddaughters to school one morning, and I see these students out assisting the parents or whoever is bringing the children to school in the car line. They have their utility jacket on, they're opening up the door, they've got a big smile, and I just thought, what a neat thing that they're doing. And so I was informed that the students have to fill out an application, they have to be good citizens, and this is showing leadership. And, you know, I can really relate to this about opening up a car door and having someone have a big smile, because when I'm a retired dental hygienist, and one of the things that my patients said, "When I came to the reception area, I had that big smile on my face," and it really changed the tone. And so having that smile and those students doing that is just really a wonderful thing. And I'm wondering if perhaps we could recognize these two teachers at a board meeting and have them talk about how they developed this program, and I just was very impressed. Thank you.
The next four speakers, Joan Herrick, Heather Brown, Paula Powers, and Marissa Mallory. Joan Herrick, you're first.
Okay. I'm Joan Herrick, and I'm going to be reading a public comment from Angela Eilers, who can't be here tonight. She wrote, "My name is Angela Eilers. I have three children in the district. All three will be participating in sports at the high school level next year. I am unable to attend this meeting and speak on my own behalf due to my attendance at a team booster meeting, at which we will be discussing, among other things, fundraising for the program. My question for the board, after I've paid my fair share of team fees, I donated money to casino nights, email blasts, and after I paid for orthopedic doctors, physical therapists, bought hundreds of protein shakes, paid for gym membership, and paid for sports massage, do I still have to fund the elite Universal Sports Institute athletic facilities you have proposed for other students, some outside of the district? I'm wondering how these athletes receive free..." And she references Trustee Blades at the February board meeting, "state-of-the-art training, while the rest of us who have students representing their schools, wearing their school name on their jerseys, will still be begging our community to sponsor our teams." And that was Angela Eilers.
Thank you. Next is Heather Brown.
Thank you, Dr. Chernus, and to our current school board for finally listening to and demonstrating your care for our students. Your innovative ideas and fresh perspectives will surely help this district continue to grow and thrive, hopefully for another 150 years. It's a shame your predecessors didn't always have a student-centered focus. Here's my story. You can jerk all you want. Here's my story. There's always been a problem with bullying in our schools. Thanks to the COVID era, I had a front-row seat to it and was stunned that my little boy's bully was his teacher. I tried to get the problem resolved. I escalated to the principal, where I was gaslit about what my own eyes and my own ear might home. I began getting involved at the district level, where lots of notes were taken. On the rare occasion I received a response, but nothing meaningful ever happened. It took me refusing to send my son to school for over a week before anyone contacted me to do anything about my little boy. That boy's been thriving and happy for years now because I removed him from what had been an abusive environment in this district. Trust has been so badly broken, I don't know that I'll ever return him to this district. The stubborn persistence with your predecessors in maintaining the status quo costs this district's money and lost enrollments. From my family alone, it's four years of funding. Most likely will be six. I actually don't know that that younger one will ever come back. This school board, this superintendent, this executive board, if you'd all been here then, I don't think I'd have left.
Thank you. Paula Powers.
My husband and I picked Placentia Yorba Linda because of its reputation and its small-town community feel. We trusted its teachers, principals, assistants principals, and staff because they were not outsiders. Many of them were raised in PYL, most of them owned homes in PYL, sent their children to PYL, and worked in PYL. It has not been the high test scores or the numerous accolades that make this district special. This district is magical because of its amazing people. My husband and I are forever grateful to the elementary, middle, and high school teachers, coaches, administrators, and staff for the years of investment you have made. We appreciate that those of you that see our kids as more than data on a spreadsheet or line items on a budget. Keep the faith and continue to shine when the days seem dark. You are loved, you are appreciated, and you will be missed.
Thank you. Marissa Mallory.
Hey, good evening. My name is Marissa Mallory. I've spent some time thinking about the last board meeting, and it really bothers me that Trustees Buck and Anderson are so dead-set against implementing innovative programs that will keep our students in our schools and draw students from neighboring districts. With district enrollment increasing as a result of new leadership and new programming, the district is providing teachers with job stability and parents with the knowledge that their child's education is of paramount importance when they keep their children in our schools. It really bothered me when Trustee Anderson listed all the projects she wanted completed, smiling at her handlers between statements. Why didn't you or Trustee Buck bring these things up in 2020, 2021, 2022, or 2023? COVID is not an excuse. Funding was available. Oh, right, COVID funding couldn't be used for those projects, just like developer fees can't be used for those projects. There are funds available now, and it's time for PYL to innovate and be an educational leader. If Trustees Buck and Anderson aren't willing to support innovation, maybe their constituents should vote them out. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Nellie Raphael, Shannie Murray, Tim Murray, and Barb Barbosa.
Good evening. I'm Nellie Raphael. I've noticed that the union, APLE Representatives and Voices for PYLUSD, a leftist group who openly supported the recall of conservative board members in Orange USD and openly supports the CTA, has not mentioned anything about closed-session items tonight. Why is that? Could it be that existing litigation is about the discrimination mesh masking scandal that former Superintendent Jim Elsasser, Carrie Buck, and Marilyn Anderson exposed our district to? Does the community know the insane amount of money the district has had to pay for the unlawful actions of Jim Elsasser and Carrie Buck? Jim Elsasser was hurriedly hired into our district by the prior board with an existing First Amendment and discrimination lawsuit against him in Clermont, when Elsasser got PYL into the same legal trouble he got Clermont into. He fled back to Clermont, leaving PYL financially responsible for his misdeeds. Is anyone aware that former HR Assistant Superintendent Rick Lopez, who joined Elsasser in Clermont, was the person who removed the summer school programs for our PYL students without notifying the board to fund his 7% raise? Rick Lopez took funding from students to fund staff raises. What other misleads did Rick Lopez participate that he needed to flee to Clermont? It's hilarious that the union reps are not pointing out closed-session items tonight when it could harm or bring light to their union-endorsed board members. Thank you, Dr. Chernus, and our board majority for not bowing down to the union and doing what's best for the students.
Next is Shannie Murray.
Hi, my name is Shannie Murray. A few things. One, absolutely loved the Tuffrey ban tonight. That was great. I also saw Dreams for Schools and Stage Light are on the consent calendar, and I just want to give a shout-out to those two awesome programs. Second, at the last meeting, I shared my concerns about the high turnover rate in PYL. I referenced many administrators who have left in the past year, and I said I feared more were being pushed out. Leandra's response was to say that we were being, quote, "bamboozled by social media." The problem is not social media. I don't care if closed-door votes are 3-2 or 5-0 because I don't care about the politics or the optics. I care about the PYL educators, and we are losing an alarming number of experienced, caring administrators dedicated to PYL students. You can act like nothing is going on, but we in the PYL community know better. Finally, thank you, Dr. Chernus, for responding to my email about the Universal Sports Institute. I think what you are saying is you're moving ahead without a board vote, but I'm still not clear on whether this will be a resource for all PYL students. Please clarify on both when you can. Thank you.
Thank you, Shannie.
Good evening. I was hoping I wouldn't have to come. PYL has always been known as one of the best districts in Southern California. Because of this, our home values have continued to grow. I've lived in the area since 2001. Unfortunately, our home prices may be affected as the board continues to make decisions that are both political, and they begin to dismantle our reputation. In 2007, I made a difficult decision to leave Placentia Yorba Linda as a teacher and a baseball coach. I went to Irvine Unified, and I've never been happier than I did. My decision at that time was difficult. This is a great school district. It always has been. The coaches are fabulous. The administrators supported the coaches, and, you know, I'm glad I work in a district where that's still the case. Many of our valuable members of this district have been let go in the past few months by decisions made behind closed doors. We are being gaslit. You're telling us one thing on social media, and some of you post, and then nobody can respond until we come to a public comment. If we're truly declining enrollment, as you say, I'm all for all these attempts to bring in more students. I think they're great ideas. However, why are we given raises and two-year contracts if we're losing money?
Hi, my name is Barb Barbosa. I'm a teacher at Linda Vista. I want to start by thanking so many of you up there for coming to our school to read to our students in celebration of Read Across America. It was awesome. We had so many of you. Some of you guys missed my invitation. You never responded, and you know what? You missed a good time because it was fun, right? We had a great time. So thank you. Thank you for that, if you're able to come. I've been attending or listening to these board meetings quite often over the last four to five years. I wanted to speak tonight to address the negativity that's often directed at the teachers and the teachers' union. I came to Placentia Yorba Linda in 1997. I had the privilege of teaching with our awesome union president, Linda Mania, in '97, and let me tell you, she's an amazing teacher. The climate has always been positive and filled with teamwork. I've been on many committees. I've piloted curriculum many times. I've mentored teachers. I've done all the things that we do as teachers, and I've always been all-in PYL, company man. Never before have I considered early retirement until this year. The negativity is really getting to me. Each morning, I'm so thankful that I have my students because their smiles keep me going. I just want everyone to know that all teachers were working really, really hard. I just... Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Barb, and thank you for the gift card. Our next speaker, John Quackenbush, and our final speaker will be Maria Stubbs.
Good evening, Superintendent and Board of Trustees. Name's John Quackenbush. I'll start out with, since it's rumors, if it's true about Joey Davis, it's a shame. He's a great principal, and I know that he's beloved by my daughter and many others. And then to continue on other things, the Sport Institute. I would like full disclosure. I'd like us to have community discussions, emails. We've had questionnaires in the past asking parents what they think of this. I haven't seen those. And we talk about communication, and I feel like we're starting to go back. We were improving, and now we're kind of going back and not discussing as much with our community and our parents. And then one other thing, I noticed that there's a thing about iHeart Media and advertisement. And this is one of those things I'm worried about with charter schools and even this academy, is that we start pushing it out to outside districts, and we lose our own kids lose out because, oh, that kid's already here. We get his money. We don't give him a position in that charter school, in that sports academy. We pull somebody else in. That's another dollar for us. And I don't care about outside district. I moved in here for this district and stuff. The last thing real quick, what I've been wanting to get, solar panels. I think it would be a great idea to get solar panels over our parking lots.
Thank you, John.
Good evening, everyone. Maria Stubbs. I wanted to thank you for accepting the playground bowls the families donated last month. The Glenview staff was very grateful, and I would like to report that the kids are enjoying them very much. I'd like to take the opportunity to congratulate you for the huge milestone the district has reached. Student enrollment for the upcoming year is no longer trending down, and that is just fantastic news. Without a doubt, this is a result of the various strategies implemented. I'm looking forward to what the Universal Sports Institute will bring and any other projects you may be planning to do. Thank you very much to those board members who vote for progress. Truly, a win for student enrollment is a win for the entire PYL community. Lastly, I want to appeal to local social media users. Some of them are bringing up names and job locations of individuals. Please be... Please be aware that although you may feel that you're somehow exposing the district, you may be indeed damaging the person's reputation, even negatively impacting them as they move on to their new job ventures. A reminder that there are laws that protect employees' rights to privacy and confidentiality, especially when it comes to H R affairs. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our last public comment. We're going to move into our action items at Business Services. Can I have a motion, please? Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve A B 1200-2756 Financial Disclosure for the California School Employees Association, Chapter Number 293.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Anderson. I have a second by Mr. Frazier, and I'm going to turn it over to Gary Stein.
Thank you. Thank you, President Blades, members of the board, Superintendent Chernus, Executive Cabinet, and community members. Tonight, under Human Resources Action 15.1, staff will recommend that the board approve the 2324 Tentative Agreement with the California School Employees Association, or C S C A. In order to comply with the provisions of Assembly Bill 1200 and 2756, the district is required to disclose the major provisions of the agreement, including the costs that will be incurred in the current and two subsequent years. This information must be disclosed prior to entering into the agreement. Included in the agenda is a document entitled Public Disclosure of Collective Bargaining Agreement that highlights the key provisions of the Tentative Agreement with C S C A. Staff is recommending that the board certify the A B 1200/2756 disclosure as provided in Item 14.1.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments, questions?
It all seems to be in order.
Very good.
Thank you for the work on getting to our agreement point. And I know it's not you, it's the whole team, so thank you to the whole team.
Lots of people.
Okay, so we have a motion by Ms. Anderson, a second by Todd Frazier. All those in favor?
Aye.
And I'm an aye. The motion carries 5-0. Can I have a motion for 14.2, please?
I'll make a motion for the 202324 Second Interim Financial Reporting and Certification of District Financial Solvency.
Second. I have a motion by Mr. Yunglet, a second by Mrs. Buck, and I'm once again going to turn it over to Gary Stein.
Thank you again. So, I'm going to, let's see if I can get this to work. There we go. So, tonight, we're going to review our 2324 Second Interim Budget Report. This is the second official revision of the district's adopted budget that we adopted back in June. Can anybody hear me? Okay, perfect. So, the report contains actual financial data through January 31 of this year, as well as revised revenue and expenditure projections based on the latest financial information available. To go over the agenda real quick, we're going to cover the Governor's January Budget Proposal for '24-'25, because that's what we need to work on. Also, the changes that have occurred in our budget since the first interim, which was back in December. And then, we'll also go over the key budget challenges and what we're looking at in the So, the Governor's Budget Proposal. This was released early in January, and it really starts our budget cycle for '24-'25, as well as wraps up our '23-'24 year. Last year, as everybody's aware, the federal and state tax deadlines were extended. Part of the issue with that was that the state forecasted revenues that were off. They assumed a higher amount of revenues coming in from tax collections that didn't materialize. The net result of that was about a $38 billion deficit that we're stuck with as we hit into '24-'25. The Governor's proposing a variety of different methods to account for this deficit, including borrowing, delays in funding, reductions, deferrals, and others. We'll talk more about this. But recession is no longer projected for the future, for the next coming years, but it's been replaced by slow economic growth. And with deficit and slow growth, it's a significant challenge, because Prop 98, our main driver for funding, is expected to be lean for the next couple of years. This slide provides just an overview of the U.S. economic outlook, as provided for us by School Services of California. It's really a mixed bag. So, what you've got on the positive side, inflation is on the decline, which I think most people are aware of. It's, we're still recovering from the high prices, but the inflation is on the decline. Employment and income trends still look strong, and the Fed is projecting to reduce interest rates in the coming year. And again, recession is not forecasted. But the concerns still remain of slow economic growth and inverted yield curve and risk factors such as international, mostly in nature, wars in various parts of the world. So, California relies very heavily on high-wage earners and investments. Employment and interest rate news usually bolster stock returns, which should help the California economy as we move into this next year or two, but it's a wait-and-see, because we have to see what happens. So, there's some good news and bad news about Prop 98, which is our main funding source. The good news is we have enjoyed considerable increases over the last several years, as well as a lot of one-time money that's been allocated to us that allowed us to build a lot of programs that our students enjoy. And it also has produced high reserves that the state will use to weather the storm. The bad news is that when we got those tax receipts, the deficit really started in '22- '23. So, that leads to the state wanting to revenge 98 going backwards, but the Governor's trying to protect us from those cuts or those adjustments by really delaying that impact until future years, when there's more money at the state level. So, good and bad. The impact on us is that the Governor isn't proposing any cuts. Really, the focus is on maintaining the programs that they've already introduced, protecting those investments. But the bad news, what we're looking at is what's called a COLA-only environment, and in school districts, COLA only provides an increase based on the cost of goods. It doesn't factor in our step-in column, retirement costs, and the other cost drivers. So, COLA only puts the district at a deficit by default. Now, what you'll notice is I'm moving, if you pulled any of the handouts online, I'm skipping two slides just for the sake of time, because that goes into how they revenge and L A O and the Governor's, difference in the L A O and Governor's proposals or projections. But moving on, so Slide 10, the Governor's Proposals. This is again the summary. The cost-of-living adjustment that the Governor is proposing to fund is .76. That's down from 3.94%. That results in about a net loss of $9 million to the, approximately $9 million to the district next year. The Governor is also maintaining or retaining the Equity Multiplier funding, which we receive only for El Camino High School, which is good news that we'll still have that, and it comes in at about $260,000. Along with those changes, the Governor is, or those funding initiatives, the Governor is also proposing to change the way that the Learning Recovery Emergency Block Grant money is to be used. So, and that would be that any unspent funds as of this July, July 1, 2024, would need to go through a needs assessment and have restrictions placed on those funds and have all of those actions included in the '25-'26 LCAP, not '24-'25, '25-'26. So, we're working with partners and throughout the state and with C D E and State Board of Education to get clarity on that. So, next, I'm going to jump into the changes that you'll see since, or that we've seen since first interim. So, first and foremost, obviously, the COLA has changed, right? So, we were expecting 3.94. We're down to 0.76 for next year. That's next year. For the year following, we were expecting 3.29. It looks like 2.73. At the same time, so our revenues are going to be lower. At the same time, our Calpers rates are at a different level, so they're .1 higher for both, for the first year, and then .2% higher for the second year out. And that's, those are our main ones. Other key changes, we have ADA. So, I want to, I know there's a lot of talk right now about our attendance, and so I want to address that. The district, and I'll talk about our trends here in a little bit, but the district has been losing roughly 400 students a year, and so we budget for that, because we need to make sure that we're budgeting conservatively. The trend that we're seeing right now with our enrollment is different. We're seeing a bubble in the enrollment right now, and we're hoping that that plays out. So, it's different. We have more students that have enrolled in the district right now. Our TK program has very much exploded with enrollment, which is good news. But, so, but we're talking about budgeting, and I'm, you know, we're going to do that conservatively to plan for the worst-case scenario. So, what you'll see on here is our enrollment. We have for '23-'24, a second interim, where one, after we did, redid the calculations, we realized we were about 1 ADA off in our enrollment, so we've adjusted that. For '24-'25 and the year out, we're still subtracting the 400 students because of the trend that I'll explain here in a little bit. ADA, what you'll see is average daily attendance is our enrollment, and then you apply our attendance percentage, which is about 93.5%. We'll talk about the value of that here in a little bit as well. That's what comes up with our ADA. Funded ADA is a little bit different, because the state funds us at the higher of current year or three-year average. You'll notice a huge or a significant drop between '23-'24 and '24-'25, because the COVID, we were given some relief in COVID times, where we took the 1920 year and carried it forward, and that's been with us for a number of years. That leaves us as of the end of '23-'24. So, we have a 900 ADA drop potentially for next year in our funding. So, that's why you'll see that change there. But we're still funded on the rolling average of the three years, so you're not, the P2 ADA will always be a little bit lower, because we'll have that averaged in attendance. So, moving forward, so when we talk about assumptions, our enrollment, as I mentioned before, we've been in a declining enrollment for seven years. That's pretty common in Orange County. There's, I think, only two districts that have seen a significant increase over the same amount of time. We projected, on average, that's 396. We projected to decline by 400 students this year, but the reality is, is we only declined by 289. So, the trend for this year wasn't, we're not seeing as much or as bad of the decline as we have in prior years, which is good news. And then, with the enrollment trends that we're seeing this year, we're hoping that it will be better than that. But so far, so good. Now, we talk about other assumptions that we've got here. So, we've got tentative agreements, which we just talked about with C S C A for the '23-'24 year and with Apple. And then, you've got the assumed enrollment. But again, I put an asterisk on the enrollment for '24-'25, because we do have an anomaly in an uptick in enrollment, which we're hoping that it retains, in which case that number will change when we bring the budget back in June. Our attendance rate is still 93.5%. I want to talk about that when we get to the end. But you'll see our LCFF revenues are on the decline for '24-'25, and then we have a small bump in '25-'26. So, let's talk about Second Interim Report. So, this is our unrestricted general fund. And you'll see the revenues across it. So, this is not our categorical money. This is not our restricted money. This is just unrestricted general fund, and LCFF makes up the vast majority of that. What you'll notice is that we are projected to be deficit spending in '24-'25 by 3.2 million, and that increases in now years. But you have to remember, that is assuming 400 loss in ADA, is assuming a lot of other things that could be changing. And so, we are working with staff to come up with plans and contingency plans on how to address that. So, this is just an overview of that. Our beginning balance, so you'll see our ending fund balance, it decreases every year moving forward. But as a district, this is, when the state enters a period where we are provided not enough to cover our expenses, which is, we've been in this position before several years ago. It's been, you know, seven, eight years since we've seen the state draw down the funding as much as it has been right now. So, we will need to adjust, and we will adapt, but this is to be expected based on where we're at with the funding and declining enrollment. On the next slide, what we have here are temporary positions and services are funded with one-time funding. So, we have eight or nine different restricted programs that are funding these positions and activities. It's important that we bring these up, because this is, these are things that we need to make sure retain, that stay in that temporary funding, so that we're not moving that over the general fund and affecting our bottom line. So, it's just something that we will keep an eye on. We will report out on this every time we talk about the budget, to make sure that we're making the adjustments where needs be. So, on the next slide, we've got our components of the ending fund balance. And what you'll see, and this is for '23-'24, what you'll see is we're still very healthy. We still have a considerable amount of reserves. And actually, in the projections, even with the deficit spending, we still have more reserves, more in reserve than I would say most districts have. We maintain that 10% with our reserve for economic uncertainty and the contingency reserve. That would be retained three years out on our current path. So, that's, but we would want to, we of course want to avoid the deficit spending, so we will work on that, come up with plans to deal with that. But this shows you the components of the ending fund balance, which is about 67 or 68 million dollars. There's 50 million in restricted money, and you have the totals there at the slide. So, as promised, we include the, an overview of all of the other district funds. What I want to point out here is this, we have a lot of projects going on. We've been working on school facilities projects throughout the year. This only takes us up through January. We have a lot going on between now and the start of the year, for instance, all of our preschools that we're dropping, all the ELO facilities that we're dropping. And so, these numbers are going to see a significant change by the end of the year, because we're all guns, or what do you want to call it? Everybody's all hands on deck with our facilities use, and also with nutrition, we've done a lot of work there, too. So, sorry? Nope? Okay. Moving on. Okay, budget challenges. I'll wrap this up. I'm sorry, everybody. So, this just provides an overview of the challenges we're looking at. So, we have projected lower COLA for the next three years. We're going to need to adapt to that. We have declining enrollment. I put the star on there, again, because we really need to see how this plays out this year. As I mentioned, '23-'24, we ended up better than we thought we were going to be. We're hoping that that trend continues. Our attendance rate is where I want to really drill in. That 93.5%, we used to be over 96 before COVID. A 1% increase in attendance, meaning if we went to just 94.5%, that is $2.6 million ongoing that we would bring into the district, a 1% change in that. So, we need to really double down on our efforts to increase our attendance. That's something we definitely have more control over, and we need to do that. So, the rest of the challenges are common. We talk about them every time, and so I won't go into detail with that. Quickly cover this slide. This slide just illustrates in money, rather than percentages, revenue coming in, costs going out. So, we have step-in column, we have our health and welfare and our other costs, and it just shows you the difference between the money coming in and the money going out, and how the next couple of years are going to be rough. And so, this gives you a picture of that. And finally, I want to talk about our timeline, which is, so right now, we're obviously in March in our Second Interim Report. This will be the final report for '23-'24 interim report, I should say. We will have in June, on June 4, we will bring the proposed budget and the LCAP for a public hearing, and after we make changes from that point, we will meet again on June 18 to adopt the LCAP and budget. At that same time, we will have our estimated actuals for our '23-'24. So, before I go to the next slide, I need to thank my staff. They did a tremendous job. My admin services team, they're amazing, especially fiscal and business services. They've been very diligent and worked very hard to prepare all this budget information, and I'm very fortunate to work along such talented people. And with that, questions or discussions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, so I just want to make it very clear. You said several things. You said several things that I appreciate. You said increasing enrollment, but you said conservative estimates.
Yes.
You're saying everything that we're looking at here, the red lines is what I'm focusing on, is based on what we projected conservatively.
Yes.
And if the trends continue in the direction that we see them going now, that could change.
Yes, absolutely. The numbers changed since we met back in August, right? Because at that point, we were projecting 400, now we're at 289. That had a big impact on our revenue coming in. So yes, we're always going to budget the most conservative way possible based on our trends. And so yes, those numbers are based on losing 400 students and retaining our attendance the way it is, yes.
Just point of clarification, just so that you know, on page one of the second interim, your enrollment count for the 2324 school year says 22074 instead of 22704. Not on your slide, but in the actual.
Thank you, okay.
One, just the first page. And I didn't see any of that throughout, so I'm assuming that the calculations are probably just fine. But just to point that out before that goes.
Thank you.
Second, we're projecting 39, or 93.5% attendance. In the past, we've gotten up to 97, 98%. In the out two years, why are we not estimating even a half a percent increase?
We haven't seen that come to fruition. And so the last couple of years, it's been hovering around 93.5, 93.6.
That's really, it's a statewide trend.
Is there anything that we're going to be doing to target daily enrollment?
Actually, you'll see that in the LCAP. So we have, we have a number of actions that are geared towards attendance and encouraging students to attend, making sure that we're being very proactive with parents and families about that.
So if we see this number tick up in that particular, even just attendance beyond anything else, that will be tremendous help for us.
I would be ecstatic, yes, absolutely.
So I just want to keep an eye on it because 93.5 seems really low. And I know that we could get up higher. So whatever we can do to support that growth. And then the last question I have is related to Fund 25. And can you talk to me a little bit about that fund and the payment that we have coming up at, at the end of our, we have that one gap year from the bond measures. What, I just want to confirm that it's there, that we're not spending it and that.
Yes, actually, we've set that money aside and that's in our Fund 40, actually. So we've set that final payment aside to make that. So that's our, our RDA money comes in on Fund 40 and then we pay out our bond, or you know, our debt out of that. We do have enough money to make that last payment and that is set aside. That won't be spent.
And that's restricted at this point?
It's reserved, right?
Reserved, okay. All right, thank you very much.
Yes.
My question has to do with the learning recovery block grant.
Yes.
How much do we have left in that account, do you know?
I don't have those numbers with me.
Because they're listed.
Yeah, no, I understood. I will definitely get that information to you.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then if you could also include in with that information, like how much we anticipate being spent by that July 1st deadline?
Absolutely, absolutely.
And then a lot of our growth is due to our TK program. Is that correct? Because the governor is, basically it's just expanding every year, more and more months of kids are able to attend.
No, I wouldn't say that. It's partly, there's two, it extends two months every year.
Right.
And so at the same time, we've been declining every year. It's been, it's been increasing by two months for the last three years. So attributing an increase this year for an extra two months wouldn't, you know, is it more? Yes, we get a little bit, we get a few more every year, but that's not attributable to our, to this growth.
Because I was under the understanding.
And it's not just, the growth isn't just TK, it's TK, K, and then first through 12.
Okay, because I was understanding, and I could be wrong, that our, we were already accepting students in TK above where the state had?
No. So the reason we didn't do that is because it came with a penalty. So when you do that, the, we would have to drop the class sizes down further if we accept any student that's younger than that age cutoff.
Yeah, so this is actually, yeah. Now, as Gary mentioned, this trend may not, you know, solidify, but this is actually real growth beyond the two-month per year extension of TK.
Sean, do you have any questions? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will need a vote on this. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 And I'm an aye, motion carries five zero.
And thank you to your whole team for all the work on this.
Yeah, that's a ton of work.
All right, we're going into the human resources. And so this will be Deputy Superintendent Gates. I would like a motion, please, first.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion. We have, we accept the tentative agreement between CSEA and the district.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Buck. I have a second by Mr. Frazier. Dr. Gates, please.
Thank you, President Blake, President Blades. Tonight, I am pleased to bring forward the tentative agreement with the Association of CSEA, Chapter 293, for the 2023, 2024 negotiations. CSEA brought forward the, to the membership and they agreed. And the tentative agreement was ratified on February 29th. I would personally like to thank Carolyn Burgess, Wendy Kenfield, Jasmine Fernandez, Joe Suarez, and Chris Lawyer for their service on the CSEA negotiation team. As you said, it's a lot of folks. I would also like to thank the district's negotiation team, which included Brenda Holstein, Richard Jimenez, Gary Stein, and Nancy Blade. We are grateful for the continued collaborative process with CSEA and our shared commitment to the ongoing success of our students in the district. Thank you for considering this tentative agreement.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Nothing other than thank you and thank you to the whole team involved.
Just gratitude over here.
Okay, well, thank you very much from the board. I'm getting there, getting there. All right, so we have a motion on the table and we have a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, motion carries five zero. All right, so we've come to the consent calendar. Actions proposed for the consent calendar items are consistent with approved practices of the district and are deemed routine in nature. The trustees receive board agenda backup information in advance of scheduled meetings and are prepared to vote with knowledge on the block vote items. Before we vote, is there any items that any trustee would like to pull?
I'd like to pull 17.1.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so besides, well, I need a motion first.
I'll make a motion to accept the consent calendar minus 17.1.
I'll second.
I have a second by Mrs. Buck. I have a, I have a first, I have a motion by Mrs. Buck. I have a second by Mr. Youngblood. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries five to zero. And can we hear about 17.1, please? Or can I have a motion for it?
Sure, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement with iHeartRadio Media for radio advertising services.
I'll second.
All right, take it away, Carrie.
So my only question, I appreciate the advertising. I want to make sure that we are, this is a short-term advertising piece that we're kicking off with. I love the idea of advertising our entire district with our fantastic academies and Orange County School of Computer Science as well as all of the other things. So I want to approve this, but I also want to consider doing more advertising about our entire district and how great it is. I hear it on the radio of other districts and we're top, so we should be also doing this. The only other comment I wanted to make related to that, let me get to it really quick. There was a lot of zip codes that were listed there. And so I'm pretty sure it's probably related to, you know, how close we are. But there was one note, here we are. And the detail, in all the zip codes, it says, lists all of them and it says genre. I'll give you more specifics. So it's on page three of the final attachment where it's talking about digital. It lists all the zip codes, the targeting, the geo zip codes. And it says, "Genre network equals all genres excluding Spanish." So I wanted to confirm that we aren't excluding Spanish from any of this. We should be also targeting and marketing in Spanish. Both of them say that it excludes Spanish.
Thank you for pointing that out, trustee Buck. We'll be sure to touch base with iHeartMedia after this, if, you know, given approval to move forward, that we are encompassing that audience within our audience. And to speak to the zip codes too, it is just a radius, including our zip codes in our boundaries and slightly outside.
Okay, great. As long as we can confirm, we'll include Spanish too, not exclude them, then I'm all for this.
Yeah, if you didn't pull, I was going to pull this one. I think this is important. One of the things that we need to do is advertise more of the things that we, that we have at this district. Specifically, I talk about all the time, CTE is a huge thing. Are there going to be specific ad campaigns that we're doing? Or is this general advertising? Is it going to be, is it going to change? How's that going to work?
Yeah, so we did one, for example, our pass ad campaign, we did a new enrollment, like enroll now type billboard.
I've seen those.
Yeah, so now we're looking at, for the computer science charter, to speak to that charter, enroll now, that kind of thing. Excitement about that. We could do things about our pathways. So we can definitely try to diversify, but we've, we've seen more districts try to reach. And when we talk about radio, what Alyssa's been finding in researching is it's actually advertising on live streaming.
Yeah, it's podcasts mostly, probably.
Yeah.
Which is another thing I was excited about, that being part of it. Because even from the stance, from the standpoint of getting people outside the district, but also people inside the district to know what's going on. There's, there's lots of stuff that happens that not all of us know about, that I think would be a great opportunity just to throw on wherever you're streaming on iHeart or whatever other opportunities we have. It's a great platform, do that.
All right, are we ready to vote then? Okay, all those in favor of 17.1?
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm an aye, the motion carries five to zero. Now we'll go into our superintendent's report. Turning it over to Dr. Churness.
All right, so thank you, President Blades, members of the board, community. It's, it's a great time of year. We are getting ready for spring break. We're getting ready for testing. We got new enrollments. I do want to speak to enrollment because it's exciting. We, again, it's a trend, but we'll take it. Last year at this time, we had 75 new kinders enrolled, new to district kinders enrolled. So this has nothing to do with the TK window. We had 75 new to district kinders. This year, and that's from January 1 through March, whatever, 6th. And this year, we have 175 new kinders. So with respect to TK, we had 105 new TKs last year at this time. Year-to-date, this year, 254. And then first through, first through 12th grade, we had about 19 last year. And we have 45 this year. So we're, we're at 202 new kids, new to district. And so what does that mean? Well, it's critically important. You know, one of my former jobs was, I was the CFO at LA County. And one of the hardest things I had to do was deny a state, deny a loan to Inglewood. And they went into state receivership because they were bankrupt. And one of the reasons they were bankrupt is over a five to six-year span, they lost 30% of their enrollment. And so what happens when you lose enrollment, typically what you're supposed to do, if you lose 100 kids, districts should reduce staffing for 100 kids. So you're always up on, you're always staffed based on your enrollment. And so Inglewood never reduced any teachers during that 30% drop in students. And so what happened was, and support staff, is they ended up with not just a huge staff that they had to lay off, but now you have all these empty schools. And so then all the charters came in from the outside and continued this spiral. And we don't want that to happen here, and it's not going to happen here. But if you look at our data, you know, in 1819, we had over 26,000 students. And right now, we have about 22? So 4,000 students. We, obviously, I'm pretty sure we didn't reduce staffing for 4,000 kids over the last, you know, six years. I know we haven't closed any schools, but think about 4,000 students. That's, you know, eight, according to our average-sized elementary school, that's eight elementary schools. It's two high schools. It's, you know, two, three middle schools. So the fact we're at 22 and the fact we've been going down 400 every year, we don't want to go through anything like that. We want to hire more teachers. We don't want to lay off teachers and support staff. We don't want to close schools. So the trends we're seeing, hopefully, like I said, hopefully they hold. But much of it, I would like to think, is attributable to what we're trying to do here. And so there is a great buzz, there's new families coming in. And we're trying to innovate to attract and retain families. So we don't have to lay off teachers. So we can keep the programs we have and offer more. And so those are facts, those are facts. 26,000 to 22,000. It's also a fact, we have 282 new students this year. And so if we continue to date, new to district students. So we're going to continue to innovate. We're going to continue to strengthen the programs we have. We have amazing programs, amazing teachers. We had some speakers here that came up from Esperanza. You know, Esperanza is down to, you know, I don't know, 1,500, 1,600 kids. This new charter school at Bernardo is going to feed into Esperanza over 100 more kids a year at this rate, just on by the fact that we've increased enrollment at Bernardo. You know, they're at 550 kids this year. We're over 800. We're going to be sending 100 more kids to Esperanza. That allows us to offer more programs, to offer, to hire more teachers, to support more students, and reinvigorate that school that really was decimated when Yorba Lynn High School came in and really divided, you know, the kids, the population. And now Esperanza is, you know, our smallest school, right? And so that's an example of how if we, if we do innovative programs and we bolster our enrollment, we can also reinvigorate our high schools. So just really excited about the work we're doing. I spend my Thursdays and Fridays at the school sites. It's the best part of my week, seeing the teaching and learning going on. We have incredible teachers and staff in this district. I want to keep them all. And so I'm doing everything I can to make sure our great teachers continue. And that's, the only way we do that is if we have families that want to come here and continue to come here. And we can't be declining by 400 kids, we just can't do it every year. Obviously, there's the money reason, there's the school reason. Nobody wants to close community schools. Nobody wants to cut programs. And we're at that point where we need to turn things around. And so initial signs are that, that shows that we are. Shout out to Kramer, California Distinguished School. So it's different nowadays, you don't apply for it, you get selected. Congratulations to Kramer Middle School, our 2024 California Distinguished School. And you know, there was only 38, 38 Orange County schools that were awarded this, 293 across the state. So big shout out there. Shamrock Run, I hope you all get your running shoes on because this Sunday, March 17th, Yorba Regional Park in Anaheim, it's our big REACH Foundation event. And so proceeds from this event go directly to benefit our middle school track meet and other programs hosted by the REACH Foundation. REACH is an all-volunteer education, 501(c)(3) nonprofit. And so more information about the event and the link to register are available on our website. And we hope you all come out. We look forward to hosting our annual principal of the day. That's Wednesday, March 27th, in collaboration with our partners at the Placentia and Yorba Lynn. That's Wednesday, March twenty-seventh, in collaboration with our partners at the Placentia and Yorba Linda Chambers of Commerce. Chapman University Holocaust Art and Writing Contest. Our middle school and high school students recently had the opportunity to participate in the twenty-fifth annual Chapman University Holocaust Remembrance Art and Writing Contest. The theme was answering the call of memory, choosing to act. Each year, students from around the world participate in this contest to research and learn about the Holocaust and World War II. So it's, it's a great, it's a great event. And so three of the students have been identified as finalists this year. Eight hundred and forty-one kids participated. And so there'll be a ceremony at Chapman University this Friday to view the submissions and celebrate the contest winners. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Dr. Charnas, Carrie.
Thank you. A lot of those things I'm gonna also attend, so I'm looking forward to those. This last month, I have had a few school visits that I'll just give a shout out to the principals and the staff that were there. I visited Yorba Linda Middle School with Principal Paige Stills. We started with orchestra and choir, which is always a great place to start any school visit when you start with music, just like our meeting tonight. They are planning right now for a full year STEM class that will begin next year. That will be, we used to have little different modules, rotations, but this full year will be, will be able to bring a lot new, a lot of new programs into the, to the STEM part of, I'm looking forward to seeing what, what they're going to bring and what they're gonna have. I was walking and noticed that their blacktop, they've got pickleball courts all over the place, which looks fantastic and fun, but they, they really need to get their blacktop resurfaced. There were cracks everywhere and it's really hard to play pickleball on a court that has cracks in it and you have no control over where the ball goes. So I'm just putting that out there so that you guys can check on it. Additionally, we have lots of new textbooks, language textbooks, including Spanish. So I went into the Spanish class. All my children took Spanish in middle school and then on through high school. And I remember the old books and these new books are just amazing, beautiful and with all kinds of great things that they can access. The one thing that they mentioned is they're gonna need new headphones to be able to access all of that information. So we need to check to make sure they, if they don't have them, we can order some for them. They do a lot of their quizzes and lessons with the headphones, which is great because then they can listen to it over and over and you don't get that option when you, when you, with the last textbook we had, it was the teacher standing up there saying the words a couple of times. So this will be a great opportunity for them. I want to thank all of the teachers and the staff at Yorba Linda Middle for the warm welcome that I had that day. I visited El Camino Real High School with Principal Scott Missouri. They had a successful year this year with new graduate, with a handful of graduations from Venture Academy. And then they also had seventeen students who successfully returned to their home campus after getting caught up. And they're going to have eighteen that are gonna graduate early this year. I also wanted to give a shout out to having no expulsions and suspensions. That is quite a feat over there and they are making sure that they're intervening and, and getting involved so that we don't have those. So congratulations to that staff, that's a hard, hard thing to do. I also talked to Mr. Missouri about an idea of alternative to expulsion program at El Camino. They have a similar one at La Sierra, La Vista in Fullerton. And that would allow us to keep the ADA from going to the expulsion access programs. I know we don't have very many, which is fantastic. So if we could maybe look at the, the dollar amount, the breaking point, what would that, how could that benefit? One, our students, but also so that we don't have them leaving our district. So I thought that was a great idea I'd pass along. I had the opportunity to go back to El Camino Real High School and to El Dorado with North Orange County ROP tour. We toured all of the digital media arts programs, including Mr. David Bloch's class that you saw today. And the thing I was most impressed with were both of the marketing, the digital media arts at both schools are really focusing on teaching kids the business side of it. So it's the project development, budgeting, all of those things that go along. And I was just really impressed by what they were doing. And I'm excited to, to share that El Camino Real is going to have a drone program next year that we're working on through the Orange County ROP. I also visited Parkview with Principal Dominique Polchow and had a chance to meet some of the students that were there for small group instruction in math. I talked to one of the teachers who just received a grant from Orange County Community Foundation for computers and a computer science program called CompuScholar that we just approved tonight. So congratulations to them, I'm looking forward to seeing what the CompuScholar will, will bring for them. Again, more of the computer science that we're expanding out throughout the district. I also toured the portables that are identified over at that location at Tefri there by Parkview for BVVA. There is offices that are in need of a few updates that they're working on to get ready. But I would like to just point out that some of the fencing over there is a little awkward to get from, the kids have to actually like cut through Tefri, the Tefri school to get over to their classroom. So there's also a backside of it, so maybe there's a way we can kind of segment that off, so it's not so much of an overlap. And then coming up, March fifteenth, I'll be at the, on Friday, I'll be at the Chapman Holocaust Writing Contest. And just to note, a number of years ago, we were honored. And I believe that we're still the only one that has all of our middle and high schools in our district that submit to the Chapman Writing Contest. Shamrock and Run, and March twentieth is the OCSBA Dinner Meeting. We haven't had anything since our last meeting, but that's coming up. And then on March twenty-second, if you've never been to the TEDx event at Valencia High School, it's amazing. So please go and listen and support the kids there. They get up on the stage and, and they give their TEDx presentation. And that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you, Carrie, Marilyn?
Everybody. At last month's board meeting, there was a lot of confusion about developer fee money and how it could be spent by some board members and executive staff. In November, we had a meeting and discussed the following for the twenty-three, twenty-four years for the developer fees. And this is what we're doing this year with our developer fees. We're adding a teacher at Ruby Drive. We're doing dual immersion improvements at Bernard Yorba. We're doing dual immersion closeout at Glenview, we're expanded learning at Wagner. We have staff salary and benefits. We are paying for our leased portables at El Dorado, Tines, VHS, Wagner, Yorba Linda. We have a life skills room at El Dorado, preschool conversion at Wagner, and remodeling offices at Glenview and a shade structure at Parkview. Also, we're replacing George Key flooring. And we have in here the kitchen and lunch area at Valencia High School, which is a multi-year project. And then in December, we passed, as a board, we passed the twenty-two, twenty-three school year development fees, which I can read to you. We did, again, we paid for our leases for our portables. We did Glenview restaurant remodel, growth classroom improvements. And again, we paid for administrative fees. So because what was being said at the last meeting kind of contradicted what we did in December and in November, so I went down the rabbit hole and did some information, did some Google searches, talked to some industry specialists. And this is what I found out. So there needs to be a nexus between the funds and growth. And it can be for new or expanding programs. And so that's why the dual language program is continually being funded out of this through expansion. TK expansion. A lot of comments were made at the last board meeting and so like adding the beach volleyball sports, that's an expansion. One of the teachers asked for new art tables because arts is expanding. And so yes, you could do that. The new band, a band room for El Dorado because again, that program is expanding. Fixing the track and fields at the middle schools because again, the program is expanding. And the kitchen remodel is expanding. And that money can be used for capacity enhancements, enhancements, which is modernization. And ninety-seven percent of the money has to be used in hard and soft fees and can't be used for maintenance. And three percent of the money can be used for administrative fees. And so I put together a packet for everybody on the research that I did. So you can just pass it down, everybody can take one. And in this packet, there's an Edsource article on developer fees. It's short, it's simple. It basically just says districts are required to substantiate the financial impact of new development and show how they have used the revenue to address that impact. Proceeds may be used for buildings or renovating schools and for portable classrooms. The California Debt Financing Guide for Developer Fees, which Sue Sawyer read out loud is in there, so you don't even have to look it up. There's the Developer Fee Report that the board just approved in December that I read from. The Residential Development School Fee Justification Study done in twenty sixteen. The Commercial and Industrial Development School Fee Justification Study done in twenty sixteen. And a report of the Executive Officer State Allocation Board Meeting that was just done in January twenty-fourth of this year. And an updated developer fee schedule as of January twenty twenty-four. So those fees are reassessed every two years by the state. And that's, and this is the year. So it shows the new fee schedule. So I would like to have a study session on developer fees from, from an expert in this field because obviously, none of us are experts and there's a lot of confusion. And at this, and at that time, we can ask our expert if a new fee justification study is in order due to the changes in developer fees just updated in January. So our fees are based on the twenty sixteen. And as you know, we've had a lot of inflation and a lot of changes, so that rate has increased. So I would like to see that happen. I did visit some schools. Travis Ranch, I got to see the new walls. I got to see children playing on the new playground equipment donated by the PTA. So thank you, PTA, and everyone who donated money to them. I learned about their Dad Watch Program and met two dads helping out that day. I was offered to play pickleball with the P students, but thought better of it because of the shoes I was wearing and I didn't think risk management would approve. I got to go to the pottery room, which is unique to that school, and see students working with clay on the pottery wheel. The creativity is really very impressive and I even got a preview of what is going to be at the district art show coming up this spring. And it's gonna be amazing, so I hope you all attend. I learned more about the refax and, and frax math programs that students are using to increase their math skills. And the students really seem to be enjoying it. And one student shared that they've almost completed both programs, but noticed that there is a geometry program. And they're hoping the district will purchase that because some people are very excited about this program. I saw the creativity of students designing their own food trucks, including designs and menus. I went to Lakeview Elementary and I had a great tour and I saw many actively engaged students. I went into the kindergarten room during a science lesson and let's just say, I was blown away. These students were sitting at their desks with their science books open and pencil in hand and following along with the lesson and making notes on their sheet at the appropriate time. I've never seen that before, so way to go, Lakeview. I enjoyed talking to students and learning what they were working on. I saw some great art and literature projects being done for open house coming soon. So I'm, and I have the open house scheduled, I'm excited to hopefully get to go to view. I met a student author. Her name is Emily. And and she actually has a book for sale on Amazon. It's a coloring book and I purchased this and I'm going to give it to, I have a bonus granddaughter and she's very excited to get this, but I wanted to share that with you guys. I learned how Lakeview is teaching responsibility and accountability in several ways. One of the ways is the butterfly garden, students plant, weave, water, clean up, and even propose landscaping designs for students to choose what and how the garden will look like. A great way to build, it's a great way to build communication skills, leadership, and how to work together as a team. Also, they do sharing of talents. With the assistance of their RBT, students share their talents and teach other students. And I met a student who was teaching crochet to her fellow students that week. And I loved seeing her confidence as she was telling me all about what she was doing. And I love the concept brought forward by the RBT because we all know that teaching a skill to peers strengthens relationships, builds confidence, and improves communication and leadership skills. I went to El Camino High School and I toured the campus and I'm always impressed by the dedication of the staff at El Camino. Servicing such a unique student population. I feel they are truly reaching to those in most need and making a difference. I learned more about the ELD student population, which is roughly sixty percent. This encompasses newcomers with no English to level four. I got to visit with the ELD teacher and learn more about the targeted approaches that she is taking. I learned about the ninety percent socioeconomic challenged students at that school and how they are also addressing those needs. I witnessed math interventions in progress and learned how they are helping their students master their math skills to prepare for the CASP. And I saw a language arts classroom reading The Great Gatsby and, and I'm just, they were just doing such great things in their things. And so, and I'm also happy to say that the school now has a mental health counselor on staff to address the needs of students. So I'm very excited about that. Some events that I attended, I attended the Miss Placentia Yorba Linda and teen competition. Many of our past and current students were competing for over nine thousand dollars in scholarships and to be title holders. In the teen competition alone, nine of the ten were current students from our secondary schools throughout the district. And many of the competitors had their community service initiative had to do with education. And I was just really impressed on their dedication to communication. And one of our current employees was the twenty twenty-three Miss Placentia and she finished her reign at the Paget. So I also have a little program, if anyone wants to check out all these beautiful women. And a special shout out to Ms. Moran, who assists in the office of the superintendent. She was the director of the Little Sisters Program and the little princesses were adorable. And again, many of them were our students. And it was just a great evening. I also attended the Orange County Music and Arts Administrator's Annual Award Ceremony. It was a great event celebrating the arts and arts education in Orange County. The night was filled with live performances of students from around the county. And the most moving was a dance performance by the No Limits Dance Club. You would be interested in that, Mrs. Gray? They were from Valley High School from Santa Ana School District. And this was a unified dance club featuring many special education students. And just watching these students perform was truly moving. And I saw leadership from all angles. From everybody in that unified, everyone helping each other and lifting each other. And they received a standing ovation for their performance because it was so wonderful. Our district had five nominees, including Jeff Giles, Principal Esperanza, Rose Newmeyer, elementary school music teacher at Glenn Knoll, Lakeview, Linda Vista, Melrose, Ria Vista, and Sierra, Sierra Vista, she gets around, and Bruce Topping Orchestra Teacher at Valencia and Kramer. and Kramer. And two of our outstanding employees were honored and brought home the honors at the twenty twenty-four Akma Awards. Jennifer Garcia, instrumental music teacher of Valdez Middle School, and Phil Mortensen, the district BAPAC coordinator. So congratulations to everyone. And I just appreciate all these wonderful individuals bringing arts into our district. I attended the Disney theme Unified Dance and I got to see some of my young friends and met many more. And I loved all the students. They were wearing their Disney clothes, Disney ears, and someone had done all their eyes. And it was just great. And I am so grateful for all the hands to make this dance a magical experience for so many students. And I love the creativity of the games, the food, the activities, the posters, the thoughtfulness that went into making a memorable experience, not only for the students, but for us adults who, who were intended. And a special shout out to McKenna Smith from Yorba Linda Middle School in coordinating these efforts. I attended the Read Across America Linda Vista. And thank you to Mrs. Barbosa for inviting me to read. It was great. I was greeted by a student named JJ and he escorted me to my class. And I had a great time reading to Mrs. Barbosa and Mrs. Rodriguez's fourth grade classes and then Mrs. Burnhardt's kindergarten class. It was just so fun sharing my love of reading with these students. And I read Arnie the Donut. So if you haven't read Arnie the Donut, it's a great book. And it was really fun watching the excitement of the students as the story of Arnie and Mr. Biggs played out. Congratulations to Valerie Easton, Esperanza Pathway Care Instructor and Hosa Chapter Lead for twenty twenty-four. She won the North Orange County ROP Teacher of the Year Award. And as mentioned, also a shout out to Kramer Middle School staff for being named a California Distinguished School, as Dr. Chernus has said. And I also like to thank the Yorba Linda Women's Club for awarding twenty-two grants equalling almost five thousand dollars to teachers at fourteen schools. And we truly appreciate your partnership in supporting our teachers. And it wouldn't be me without making a shout out for Love Placenta, April twentieth. The signups start on March twentieth. We're going to be at thirteen elementary schools throughout the district and as well as nonprofits. And a city, and it parks throughout Placenta. And Love Yorba Linda is also April twenty-seventh. And startups start in the end of March. More details on their website. So this is a great opportunity for students and families to come together and serve our community. And if you need any more information, I'll be happy to give it to you. So that ends my report.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I too was honored to be at Linda Vista and to be with Ms. Barbosa. Thank you again for showing me around that little gem of a school. Now, one of the things that they, I didn't know was they've got this incredible slide that is in there. I, yeah, I was a little, I was a little afraid that if I were to try it, that would be, one of our risk managers might have a, an issue with that. But it looked amazing. The kids appeared to have a lot of, a lot of fun having that there. And I was able to help read to fourth and fifth graders. I did not know there was a, an opposite side to the Three Little Pigs story, but I soon found out the wolf has his own version. So needless to say, that was, that was a lot of fun. They not only got to hear me drone on about the book, but they also got to ask me very unusual questions. But it was, it was great. And I enjoyed being a part of a, a time in which we were doing reading across the nation. I think that was very important. So thank you again. This, this week, I'll be attending the Chapman Holocaust Arts and Writing portion. I look forward to seeing all the entries that were included from not only our district, but from just around all the, the other school areas. So other than that, we'll, we'll kind of see how the rest of the, the month goes. And that's the end of my report.
All right. I actually had a tremendous visit at Valencia High School with Principal, Principal Hertzfeld. And we went through, like, we started off with music. When you start the morning with music, Carrie, I a hundred percent agree. Jazz band was working through their songs for the competition that was happening this last week. And it's just, it gets you in the right mood. And they're phenomenally led by, their, their soloist was so good on the soprano saxophone. Anyways, great way to start the day. The areas we focused on, we went to the science classrooms. If you haven't been into a science classroom at Valencia, they are amazing. They have got some of the coolest and most innovative equipment that the kids are equipped. I talked to actually one of the, there was a substitute in the class. And he actually graduated from Valencia and then went to UCI, I believe. And he said the things that he was able to do at the Valencia Science Program prepared him far and away above, above all the other students that went to UCI with him. So the things that are happening at Valencia academically, in the arts. And then we went into the media room. And they have a, if you haven't been to the Valencia media room, they have a live streaming setup where they stream from outside the campus, all of this room, and then out, they are doing plays, they are doing sports, they're working on wiring the baseball field so you can live stream the baseball. And, and it's got all of the things that you would expect in a high level media live stream studio for these students to be able to know. They can use active replay. They can do scene cutting, graphics, all that stuff. And again, another program that we have at the district, that's at Valencia, that is, is just making a huge impact for the students after they leave here. And then finally, we went through the, I need to get the name right. It's, it's the building. Yes, Bidah. Thank you, Bidah. Way better way to say it. And they had, we went through the shop there. And somebody mentioned shop tonight in their comments. Oh, they've got shop at Valencia. They've got, if you know anything about table saws, they've got jet table saws and they've got big time equipment in there. They go all the way from a model of a, a house, a shed, all the way to framing and building the shed. They're on site. It's, I mean, you talk about equipping our students, the programs that we have here, and that's just the tip of the iceberg of what we've got going on. And the things that we have here that we are equipping our students for is so exciting. And the thing, I mentioned the iHeartRadio because those kind of programs, we need to get out and tell people about. Because I think there's so little, there, there's so many things that we don't realize is happening because we're all in our little spheres. So that's a huge shout out to Valencia and everything going on there. I also toured the, the potential site for the USI, which just talking through the vision with some of the people that are going to be involved and Dr. Chernus, this is going to be something that is one of its kind in a public school setting. And I mentioned to Dr. Chernus, and I've, I've said this before, the biggest thing that we need to make sure we do is we focus on our students first. Our PYLUSD students are our priority with this. And I know it's been commented before, make sure that that's the focus. It is. As far as I'm concerned, that's where our focus is. And the ability for students that are doing independent study through Parkview to be able to during the day, take this high level athletic training program and level up their abilities in a way that is not affordable to most people. There are, there are academies like this, starting up private academies around Southern California, starting at twelve thousand dollars a semester. This is, this is just the level of innovation that this is going to bring. And the students that potentially are going to benefit from that in the district are huge. In addition to that, allowing our normal high schools to be able to utilize this outside of the normal school hours for the USI is going to be another huge benefit. I heard somebody say something about money earlier. Also, this is funded completely through ADA. These, this is funded just like our other schools. So this isn't extra funding that we're pulling from somewhere else. This is from the students that are attending the school are funding this program. So that's, that's about it. And I also attended the El Dorado High School Big Fish Musical, which if you haven't caught it, I think they're still got a few shows this weekend, but the last for, the last performance for some of these seniors. And I just, I, I love the arts and all this stuff. And so being able to see our students, and I say it, I think every time, excel in the gifts that they've been given. And, and us to be able to nurture that and come out of here with abilities that exceed what they had prior to this is just, it's such a phenomenal thing for our students to come out of. And that is the end of my report.
Thank you. In regards to the developer fees and the USI and the talk about tonight, Education Code Section seventeen six two zero stipulates that the governing board of any school district is authorized to levy a fee, charge, dedication, or other forms of requirement against any development project for the construction or reconstruction of school facilities. Developer fees may be used to finance new schools and equipment and to reconstruct existing facilities in order to maintain adequate housing for all the district's students. Other legitimate use of fees include, but are not limited to interim housing, site acquisition, replacement of aged inadequate portable classrooms, and housing for class size reductions. So as we see, the USI project fully qualifies under the current developer fees funding source. And I also was able to tour it with Todd Frazier, I've been able to tour it several times. And the excitement as more and more of our high school coaches and middle school, the people who are involved in our middle school sports, as they're going through it, they're super, super excited about what our future is with that sports institute. And you know, a lot of the coaches have said they have these big teams, but they said that they would love to like maybe send their linemen in, you know, some days for the agility and the weights. And they'd love to send, you know, like, like their wide receivers and their running backs in for the speed and, and different things. And so there's a lot of communication amongst all of the, the coaches in middle school and in high school about the possibilities that, that this could bring to our students. I was able to visit Glenview, in fact, the day after the board meeting. And they were doing a walk through ancient times. And so I was able to sit through that. It was very cool. And I, when I walked the classrooms, I was very happy that I could still understand what they were saying in all of the Spanish rooms. I had a very good, I was able to sit on the library. That was super fun. They were reading a cool book. And everyone was just very in tune. It's the library in Glenview is doing a fabulous job. I think at that time, they were still delivering the, at the board meeting the previous night, they had given the playground balls and the tether balls. And so they weren't up yet. But then as I was standing in there, as I went in, there was more shipments from the community of more playground balls and tether balls coming in. So that was cool to see. And I was also escorted around by three principals for the day. And they were quite energetic. So that was fun. That was fun to be around. I went to Wagner and it was at Wagner that the drum line from Chuffrey was when I was doing my tour through Wagner. And so Sarah Barton was there. And I said, hey, let's open the board meeting with the drum line. And so then the drum line became the octet in the hallway. And from there, it just kind of went from there. So they did a phenomenal job. And so once again, if anybody has any suggestions or wants to open the board meeting, send me an email and let me know. As far as to, I noticed, I remembered Trustee Anderson said about the Esperanza High School, the desks in the art room. I was, I, after that board meeting, I was keeping in touch with Lynn Magnin. And so actually, they were just given desks out of the principal's funds. And so I was also curious to how much the principals are funded and how does that work? Because some of the stuff that was talked about tonight, I'm wondering if it falls under the principal funds. I did the Read Across America. I started Travis Ranch and had a few lively classes. And I had, I think I had a fifth grade, I had fourth and fifth grade. And the fifth grade class, I had read to the fourth graders the year before. So that was fun to see. A lot of the things that I, I always ask, like, what can we do for you? And a lot of what we're hearing is playground balls. And as the kids go into fourth and fifth grade, they're still kids. So they do want swing sets and they still want that type of thing. They did talk about the black top needing to be repaved and the lunch line has still not been solved. We solved the walls. And so there's walls up in their classrooms, but we haven't signed the slow lunch line. And then they also, we were trying to solve a lot of problems that day about, you know, could they go to recess first and then eat after? So not go, you know, sit down at lunch and then go to recess. And so there was a lot of conversations about efficiency at lunch lines and recess. And then I went over to Linda Vista. Thank you, Mrs. Barbosa for inviting me. It was great. I've unfortunately had to follow Dr. Gates, who apparently was singing and carrying on in the classroom. He was singing. And so when I walked in, I think I had to sing like a couple lines just to try to keep up. But that was a fun day. Read to a couple classrooms. And they asked a lot of questions about like my prior profession and just a lot of questions. And so it's really fun to just interact with the kids. You kind of read for the five minutes, but then you have twenty-five minutes to talk to everybody. And so discussions are always lively and, you know, go into interesting directions sometimes. The one thing I did want to bring up before, I got an email before I came to the board meeting, I'd say this afternoon, is a parent said that their child is, has some medical problems. And so sometimes they get sick in class. And so they were at El Dorado and I guess when they went to the bathroom, they asked to be excused during the classroom and they went to the bathroom, there was a lot of people vaping inside the bathrooms. And so that kid who was sick and nauseated was unable to access the bathroom because of the amount of vaping and the amount of kids in the bathrooms. And I was really happy that, to hear out of Yorba Linda High School that there was actually some students that were caught. And so they've kind of been handling that. And so I'm wondering if there's a way to, for our security, you know, around the campus to be able to check the bathrooms, like even during class time, just to stop that. Because you don't want kids to not be. And then I got another email, kind of the same. I think it was two parents probably talking. So they sent me an email. Another one, they're not eating, they're not drinking. And because they don't want to use the restroom, because when they walk in there, this is the type of behavior that's happening. And so I do think that we do need to take this very seriously at all of our middle schools and our high schools, not just necessarily El Dorado. But we do need to take this seriously and we need to try to figure out a way to solve this problem. Because we don't want our kids that, you know, that have medical issues, are nauseated, or just need to use the bathroom. You know, the bathroom is not a place for vaping and for smoking weed. It's just not. So I think we should really crack down and try to, you know, as a community, as district, everybody needs to crack down on this. So the bathrooms are a safe place again. And I think that that is it for me. I look forward to some school visits. And yeah. So thank you all for coming tonight. It's nice to see a big crowd at the school board meeting.
President Blades, I just wanted to thank you again for bringing in the, the bands. I think that's an awesome touch to our, our meetings. I did want to apologize on behalf of the board to the young lady in the Lake Tahoe shirt. She was over there next to the drum line with both fingers in her ears. I know that had to be pretty loud right there. So I apologize. That was, that was incredible. I had, I had to do everything I could to keep another board member from jumping into the line. It was, it was pretty, pretty impressive. So thank you.
Of course. Yeah. And I'm, I'm being very serious. I, you know, I stumbled across the drum line. And you know, we were kind of laughing and have we ever brought a drum line to a board meeting before? I said, well, let's just do it. Let's, let's see what happens. And I think we are probably the most entertaining meeting you could go. I don't think they're doing this at city council meetings or at the water board meetings. So I mean, at least if you come, you're going to have some form of entertainment. And it's free entertainment. And so with that, if I can have a motion for adjournment.
I motion.
I second.
All right. I have a motion by Ms. Anderson, second by Mr. Youngblood, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five zero. Our next meeting is April sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, and it will be the LCAP review. And that will start at four PM.